Is called order, there is a binder labeled in the back with materials in it. And you can review that at the side of the room. Meeting agendas are available for the public at the table at the side of the room. And everyone, he is here except for John Yuhan. Where did I miss the pledge? I don't, I don't see it there, but.
Right now, you're on, you're on cue.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so we get approval of the agenda.
I'd like to add the, what we're gonna do with the North Star.
Okay, North Star.
And where you put it, Madam Chair, is up to you.
I'd like to add two things also.
We'll get to what you want to add too.
I'd like to add, looking at the expenses, I want to look at the LCS coaches that we've been hiring for extracurricular.
Discussion.
Discuss about that. And then I'd also like to talk about or add on about the girls hockey coach and assistant coach. I don't know if they've had any interviews yet, or it's been posted, so I'd like to learn about that.
All right, where can we add it on here?
Josh will be talking to Zoom, so you could just add it right after that.
Okay, should we go consecutively with all three of those? Do we do that?
Just add them, you're gonna add it as what, what number?
That would be five one, right? Where Josh is gonna.
Five one A, B, C, if you want.
Five one, sure. Okay, does that work for everybody? Okay.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the agenda as amended.
So move.
Um, do we have any visitors that would?
Who can't vote on?
Oh, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You're opposed?
No.
Oh, you gotta ask. Opposed?
Silent.
No, okay. And that passes.
Yeah.
Um, recognition of visitors and visitors input. Anybody? We're good? Okay. Um, have a motion for the consent agenda as presented or amended.
One second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Reports, I think five point ones, reports. Okay, I think I got them. Um, reports. Um, the budget reduction update with Josh Lampa. Oh, he's muted. Oh, he's okay.
Can you hear us, Josh?
Josh is muted.
Oh, there he is.
Hi, Josh.
Can you hear us, Josh?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yep, yep.
Where are we at, what's the question?
Um, kind of go through what you, what you're making a recommendation for, what athletics and activities is making recommendations on? And how you came to those recommendations?
Are we talking the hundred twenty-five thousand?
Yes.
Yep.
So a few of your sheets there, um, one is increasing some revenue. For the twenty-five, twenty-six season there, uh, by increasing, uh, student activity fees and, um, season passes. Um, and so if you guys decide that that's a good idea, that would generate roughly fifty-six thousand dollars next year. Uh, in extra revenue, fifty thousand from activity fees and about six thousand from passes. And then the following year, passes would even be more, but because next year the students get free passes due to a grant. So no students have to buy in season passes next year, so that's nice for them.
So what would that, Josh, can I stop you there? What, what, how much would the activity fee go up then for students?
It's on here.
Is it on here? Oh, I'm sorry.
About, there would be a hundred and eighty dollars for junior high, two hundred dollars for nine through twelve. Um, fine, ours will be ninety and a hundred, we still have the free reduced lunch, uh, which would be half and seventy-five percent. And then the family max goes up to eight hundred to stay in tune with the percentages. Would be the difference there.
So after, after twenty-five, twenty-six, the students would have to pay for a student pass?
Correct, they paid for a student pass this year too, next year they got a grant to pay for them.
Oh, they paid this past year too? Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, okay, that was my question.
So can I ask a question? When was the last time we increased fees? For?
Uh, we did ten bucks last year.
Was it ten or was it twenty-five?
I think it was ten. Um, but they, that was the first time we changed fees since I've been here, so. Um, just for reference, the two hundred dollars, that puts us right up there with everybody else in our section. Duluth is two hundred dollars and Denfield and Hermitones and it matches Coca-Cola, it matches Chisago Lakes and the north branches in our section. We're still actually below most of them, so it just puts us right in the ballpark.
I have a question. Josh, and I know you've done a lot of work on this and hit your one twenty-five. Do you know how much junior high transportation costs us in a year or approximately?
Uh, yeah, I did have a number there, but it was thirty, I don't. I don't have that information with me. It was like thirty thousand dollars or something like that, around there. But my goal in this is to raise the fees and, you know, the other parts which I'll talk about. And I don't have to eliminate any transportation, so I'm trying to keep all the transportation in play.
But only reason I'm, the only reason I'm asking Josh is that we're hiring out coach buses for our, our junior high to, to go to Colerain and play football or volleyball or whatever. And our high school are taking buses and I'm just wondering if we tried doing parents and not raise the fees as much? Or, you know, so you say, let's just say you said thirty and, and raising the fees gives us fifty-six. So if you only raise the fees half as much and went to the parent's, you know, carpool or whatever for the junior high sports, you still, you know, try that this year. I, I'm sorry to throw that at you now, but.
Yeah, I was just trying to avoid all the transportation because I think that's gonna be a big headache if we don't have transportation for our kids to go to the games. I do know that, and you'd have to ask Bob Boss to know the answer more, but he's hiring a lot out that, so I think we're just so short on drivers. If it's our own drivers taking our kids, it sure is a lot cheaper, you know, than hiring out to LCS, for example.
Yeah, it was, it was twelve thousand dollars just this last month that we paid out to LCS coaches. And it's unbelievable.
Yep.
Um, and it's on the agenda to talk about later, I don't know if I could talk about it now with Josh. But I, I know.
I think that would make sense, yeah.
I know it would be a Bob Boss thing, but I was just wondering if maybe there's an incentive, like even if there's some retired bus drivers, I know Tom Anderson's out there and, you know, a few others, but could we, you know, get some of those retirees to do some of just these? All the dates, I looked at all the dates that we pay for the coaches, none were on a weekend. It was all, you know, Monday through Friday, it wasn't the Saturday, you know, trying to find somebody. So it was all during the week, so I'm thinking, okay, they probably have their own bus routes that.
Would liability come into play on that if they're just?
Well, they'd be employees.
They were employees.
You, are you saying you'd pay them still?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, we have to pay them and maybe there would be incentive. To come back, maybe there would be incentive that it, it would still be cheaper. Because those bus drivers that we do have would, are probably working their bus routes when these kids are leaving to go to these. I mean, one was in Chisago Lakes, Grand Rapids, Lewis, Esco, Cokey, you know, so they have to leave earlier in the day. Um, but I just think we have to find a creative solution for not having these coaches.
Coach buses.
Coach buses, yeah.
Coach buses, yes, I agree, hundred percent.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Well, yeah, I can't answer that question for you, but that, that's more of a Bob, Bob, Bob's answer for you there, um.
Right, should I also ask about hockey?
Bob and Bob gets me, so.
No, I don't.
No, wait, wait.
Okay, I don't have any.
It's just an update.
Well, my other portion there is just kind of equivalent to junior high coach, um, you can see what everybody's asked to either eliminate or they're gonna try to chip in and buy or pay for the booster's club, so all the stuff that's in bold, so. Boys, boys and girls basketball are gonna come up with thirty, three, three, five. Volleyball is actually gonna cut their assistants at five thousand dollars, that can give us some more savings. Um, track, I got it down where I can do, uh, half of junior high coach for each of the boys and girls team. Uh, you can see the swim there to the two junior highs, so basically it's all the junior high teams. A lot of the booster clubs are gonna pay a check right back to the school to keep that coach in place. Football is gonna try to work more of the game worker angle to come up with their thirty-eight, thirty-five. Uh, so they're working on that, see, to see how they can come up with that thirty-eight, thirty-five and what are the differences and booster club's gonna pay. Uh, we're just gonna eliminate the dance junior high, because we didn't have that one last year. Same with tennis, we're gonna split that up, I got hockey in there, their boosters are gonna pay and cover that, so a lot of these are covered. Um, the only ones that are kind of tricky is the knowledgeable and junior high speech, student council is good with this. They can go seven through twelve and trying to keep with the junior high theme all the way through and kind of spread it out all equal there, so. And then the strength coach, we're gonna keep him in the summer, uh, he has two paid stipends right now and our coaches are gonna pick that up in the winter and run the weight rooms. And then he'll still run the strength coach in the spring, so he'll still get paid, uh, half, one of those salaries, so. And that grand total comes from seventy-six thousand, seven hundred forty-five dollars. Uh, what's not on there is Alpine, they, they're chipping in too, I'm trying to get every sport to chip in, they're gonna pay for a couple lift tickets. Um, so they're gonna save about a thousand dollars, so that grand total comes about seventy-seven thousand, five hundred.
Awesome.
Um, out of our coaches and advisor budgets, you know. So if you add that with the fees and stuff, we're at almost a hundred and thirty-three thousand. I'm over my hundred twenty-five thousand dollar target, there's some wiggle room there, about eight thousand dollars, um, to see if we can play with. So we raised the fees, raised the passes, do these cuts, we're over the one twenty-five mark.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, great job.
I guess I kind of have a random question. So when school board members go to like a sporting event or to a play or concert or whatever, we don't pay any fees because we're, we're expected to attend those things for getting information on what we see going on there as school board members. And I know that staff, um, I could be wrong, but staff typically doesn't pay athletic fees and all that kind of stuff either, right? For going to a game? Do they, does staff pay to get to a game?
Yeah, the, no, I don't.
No? So I think, I, yeah, I, okay, I think some people probably have, some people haven't, but, um, is that the same with employees and their kids being in sports, they, they pay for them, right? Coaches pay for their kids' athletic fees for playing volleyball or any of that?
They pay their fees, yeah.
Okay.
So, so teachers get up, if free pass?
Typically, in school districts, teachers get to go to games and things for free as employees because sometimes they end up, you know, having to take care of issues that are happening and.
Sure.
So I think that's kind of a typical thing.
Oh, I know that.
Well, if you want my honest opinion, I think it should be required for staff to come to the games and cover, but that's a different topic. But yeah, I'd love to see more staff at games.
Yeah.
It's just a random question.
Going back to my, my question, Josh, is when I saw your numbers here, we're, we're getting a lot of money from the booster clubs. And the booster, and the booster clubs are parents. And then we're hitting the parents again for increased fees, that's why I was wondering if we could do something with the junior high sports and drop the fees down a little bit, so we're not hitting them, I, I mean, we're hitting the parents at both ends then. So that's.
We're gonna hit each their way, right? We're gonna hit them with their gas and their cars too, if we do it that way, so.
Well, the thing is, is if, if one parent, if one parent. If one parent carpools and says, I'm gonna, I'll go to these game and you can't go because you're working, you know, it's parents go anyway.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Like anything, it's gonna be, it's gonna vary per sport, you know, that'd be hard to do for football. Hard to transport a hundred and twenty kids in cars, where it's a lot easier to do it in a basketball game, you know, when you're only sending ten kids to the junior high basketball game or some grade game or something like that, so. We'd have to really sit down, look at it sport by sport and sit down with Bob Boss and see what we can figure out, if that, how much money we would save and if we want to put that onto the parents.
Yeah. Okay, any more questions?
I have a question?
Nope, good job.
No, thank you.
Thank you so much, Josh.
Cheer loud for that, cheer loud for the, uh, golf team.
Yeah, there, there's a hockey question, the hockey question about the.
Okay, oh, Josh, I had a question about, I haven't seen a posting for the girls hockey coach or girls.
We never posted it. It was supposed to be on the agenda today, but I guess it got taken off, so it'll be on the next agenda. But we met and the activities committee voted to remove the interim label and it was gonna come to you guys as renewing her as the head coach. And then if you guys decide not to renew her as head coach, then we'll post it, but I'm hoping you don't. I think she deserves to be the, the, uh, head coach, so.
So it was.
We never let it post.
It was never posted. Aren't we supposed to legally, aren't we supposed to post everything?
Not if we're renewing, we don't need to post, and that, that's why I asked the committee if we can lift the interim label offer and we're just gonna renew her as the head coach, and they voted yes to that.
My only argument with that is if, if we post, you know, when she originally took the position, if we posted it as interim that says that this is just for now and we're going to post, so I, I understand and I don't, you know, I respect the work that the activities committee, athletic committee has done.
Label removed, so it doesn't have to be posted.
We, um.
And that's all we're here.
It, it'll be on the next agenda item?
Next.
Yep.
Meeting?
Next meeting, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I just, I know where you're going with that and I kind of agree with that, yeah, we'll see.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Thanks, Josh, great job.
See you, Josh.
Anything else?
I think that's it. And we got five A, right? We hit the.
You guys?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Five one A. I can't remember what that even is now. Well, one was about the LCS buses, the other one was about the, a girls hockey coach, I don't, and then recall what the third one was. That was, um, Tim. Did you have, wasn't that you that wanted the five one A we started out with?
You added to the agenda, what you wanted added to the agenda.
North Star.
Oh, but, yeah, the.
There you go.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, making a decision on, on the North Star.
Okay, there we go.
Making, not making the decision, telling Noel what to do with the North Star.
I think they have to wait till Jody gets back.
But, um, back to the, the coaches, LCS coaches, could we have Bob Boss at the next meeting? So could, could maybe have a discussion.
Yeah, I like that.
Creativity, what we could do.
Yeah, because that's insane, it's not a moment.
Well, it is, and it's been consistent.
I've been getting feedback out in the community that people are actually chuckling when Rock Ridge kids from junior high sports come rolling in on a coach bus.
Sure.
So.
And it's, the way, the other side of that, that coin is, so you have the high school teams traveling on a school bus. And junior high, yeah.
Right.
So we, we suck our kids in in seventh, eighth grade on the coach bus and then, then we.
Sounds about right.
Yeah, then we hammer them down when they're in tenth, eleventh.
I'm guessing that it has something to do with, you know, when people are leaving for sporting events, sometimes they're leaving at eleven o'clock during the school day. Sometimes they're leaving at two o'clock in the school day and it probably impacts busing our students back at the end of the school day. And that's probably what's impacting, but we gotta be able to come up with something a little more, more creative, I mean.
Cost efficiency.
Yeah, for sure.
And this is always gonna happen in the spring too, because everything, you know, with the weather, it depends on the weather, so they have to crunch a lot in.
Yeah.
In month of May, once, you know, supposedly it releases, so.
Okay, and I'll see.
Five one A.
Not five C, I'll make a motion that we, um, have Noel post for the North Star principal position.
I second that.
Okay, I'm a little confused by that.
Some discussion.
Okay, I'm confused by that, I don't get it, why don't we just, why do we have to post for it?
Because it's not on the agenda, we're, we're gonna to do it properly, we have to.
That's why you have to do it, you have to post for it, so you can't just, how, I don't get that, we didn't post for high school, did we, for high school?
You already did for, for high school.
And, okay.
All right. So I guess I'm, I'm, I'm wondering about that because I, I stand by what I said earlier. Um, if we're looking, yeah, I'm just gonna speak freely. So again, based on our conversation during the working session, I, I know that Scott would do a great job with the academies and moving that forward, but with, you know, new information I feel like arising, I feel like, I understand that Willie doesn't have high school experience, but he has been working with high school students with the job shadowing and school to work stuff and I just, I feel like that's the least disruption and he can continue to work on the academies, which I feel is a priority for, for me. And he will be accessible with Jill O'Jah in that position, um, as a career counselor. I just feel like that is, that's the most logical if Willie is going back into a principal position.
And the only thing I'll say.
And we got the dean, we brought back a dean.
The only thing I'll say on that is Willie said Mark Winter, who has been at our high school, didn't have time to do it. And he said he wouldn't have time to do it, so it's not logical for us to put him there somewhere where he's never been, no experience. And just because we want, I want the career academy to go, but the thing is, to tap into Willie as a resource, Jill can tap into Willie any, anywhere.
But I, again, I will, I'll just.
If, if, if she wants to do it.
I'll go back to the same situation, Scott, Scott Manny is going to be doing principal job, so he's in the same position then as Willie would be if he was in that position. You know, having to deal with behaviors and other, you know, principal duties that would keep him away from the career academies. But again, I feel like having. that would keep him away from the career academies. But again, I feel like having, having Willie accessible for the career academy's knowledge that he's had and given to this district for how many years now, I just feel like that's, that's invaluable. I mean, I, I feel like.
I'm betting from, from North Star, he would still be willing to give the, that information a lot of telephones and, you know.
Well, I'm, I'm sure, but it's different being in the same building and, and like we heard earlier too, I mean, he's, he's kind of the face of the career academy. And so, and you know, with that being said, Jill's, Jill's his partner and they work side by side. And I just feel like moving it forward, that, that is going to be the best, best option. And again, we, we brought back a dean to help with the behaviors, so.
Okay, but when Mark was there, we did have two deans, so, and we still had the issues and he still had the lack of time. So in my, my opinion, I think it's fragile and we're, you know, new school district and the, we have to be very careful um, who we're putting where and who we're taking from. And I guess I've changed my mind a little bit about Willie. I guess I would prefer him staying in his role and um, keep, you know, Manny at where we said, you know, when he was going to the high school, he has experience. Willie doesn't. He has a different, totally different relationship with the kids and I, I believe um, Scott can do a great job at the high school. That being said, I'm not willing to leave North Star vulnerable. It needs a principal, so I would like Todd to fill that role.
Well, we have a, we have a motion on the table.
Or someone. We're discussing. I'm discussing.
Huh?
But that, I, but that motion, to me, that.
That motion is for us to go in one direction and if you wanna go in a different direction, you'd have to have a different motion.
And you're talking posting internally?
Yeah, posting internally.
First.
First.
For North Star, was that North Star? Okay.
Right.
I agree with you Nicole though. I, I think let's, let's keep Willie in his current position and keep Scott at the high school and Todd at um, North Star.
But the problem is we will lose, spend money, correct? Am I correct in saying that? Yeah. So that will cost us money.
How much though? Isn't he getting part of his salary if he stays, if Willie stays and where he's at, he's getting part of his salary?
About a hundred thousand.
Because of special ed?
But no, Scott, or not Scott, I'm sorry, Todd said that he has this grant, so hopefully that comes through. That's, that's, you know, can help with that, right? I don't know, I'm just not, I'm not willing, okay, and maybe I'll go with your motion cuz I'm not willing to leave North Star vulnerable. I'm just not. That's unacceptable. And I guess, yeah, money is money, it's terrible, but we, we have to make sure these have foundations.
Well, yeah, my mo, my motion actually solves, could solve the, the North Star once and forever.
Okay.
That's why I made the motion I made.
Okay.
Because Willie might just throw a curveball and say, and not apply for it, or Todd, or whatever, so, I'm just kidding, but.
Right. So what was your motion again, Tim?
My motion is to direct Noel to do an internal posting and interview for the North Star.
And I second it. We had discussion. Any more discussion? Those in favor?
Signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay. Okay, then we got through that and now I think Andrea is up.
Now we gotta give her a hard time too, or she'll feel like she's being left out.
No, I'm, I'm good, I'm good. It's a good evening. I'm here to give you a fiscal year twenty six budget update. So there was a budget document in your fourth packet and you'll notice still, um, I'll give you some parameters that were used in this document that you have in front of you. We used the enrollments that were based on the last aggressive progression percentage um, method from the February tenth meeting. Um, the reductions that were approved on April fourteenth of two point, two million four hundred and eighty seven thousand and then also the addition of the dean on May twelfth of a hundred and eleven thousand, a hundred and fifty three dollars. So that net is two million three hundred and seventy five thousand eight hundred and eighty one. Um, medical insurance, as you're gonna hear about later in the meeting, um, that you'll need to approve tonight. I did use the medical insurance that we are asking for approval of ten point nine percent. So there's employer costs of course associated to that. I used zero percent of wages for the twenty five, twenty six upcoming year, except for those contracts that have already been previously settled. So we do have some contracts that were previously settled already. Um, utility changes that were presented to you in, during March. And also as you're looking at this and we will need approval by the, by June thirtieth, that is state statute. We need to have an approval of a budget by June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, for the twenty five, twenty six year, so keep that in mind. As we're looking, looking forward and we're waiting to hear on the state decisions, we have, still don't have a hundred percent final on those decisions. We still have federal problems that are still unknown as usual right now. Um, I'm concerned that there will be less funds coming. Keep in mind, these enrollment numbers were based on enrollment numbers from February, so we're still waiting to see those coming for the upcoming year. And as our class of twenty twenty six will graduate, that kindergarten class again is lower, that's gonna come in. And just keep in mind of our area financial situation too as we're looking forward, as we've had some shutdowns in the area. So just to give you those updates and the numbers that you see here, and then we do need this approved uh, by June thirtieth of twenty twenty five. So at the next meeting, it will come for approval.
Okay, sounds good. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea.
Okay, Washington DC trip presentation. Yep, just state your name.
I'm Steph Lettska and I teach SoCal's uh, high school at Rock Ridge. And my super brave and only now postgraduate that was able to attend tonight to talk about the experience, this is Maddie Klein. We're just kinda gonna, gonna go over for you um, the experience that we got to have this spring. Um, at the end of April, we took ten seniors, a group of ten of us to Washington DC for the Washington DC close up program. And prior to our consolidation, both districts kind of ran a DC trip for seniors. And I honestly hadn't gotten since like pre-COVID, so it's been kind of a little bit, it's been harder to get out there. But we did get a grant to help out with the cost of it and to like get it started again in our current district. So we did like kind of a small group trial, um, to see what it was like. And Maddie's here to go over a little bit of our presentation and show you some of our great pictures.
Soon as they come up there.
There it is.
I'm just gonna go over basically what close up is for those who don't know, but like I said, I mean, this is hopefully not something new. We have, both districts have done this prior, but it's basically like a nonpartisan nonprofit program where we get to travel to DC and then the kids get to like actually get immersed in like civic engagements and the political processes. And that's why the program is so cool. At Virginia, we really kind of didn't take the specific close up program through them um, to try to like kind of cut costs sometimes, um, but when you go with the program, it's very all encompassing. Like they have the kids all the time. Actually, cuz I was like considered a new teacher on this program cuz I hadn't been part of that official program before, I actually had to go to class and then they were gone. So I was at class, they were at class and doing all sorts of stuff and going all over DC. And then we got to come together like Wednesday, which is our Capitol Hill day traditionally, like the program goes for a week. And Wednesday is the day where you get to be with the representatives and senators and things. Um, so then we got to be together on Wednesday and then Thursday and stuff at the end of the week, it lightens up a little bit and then we get to hang out a little bit more. Um, but it's a very interesting um, program. They, you know, send millions of kids all the time. One of the coolest parts about the program is that you are with other high school kids from all over the country, no matter what week you go. And this year, we just happened to also get like the um, blossoms, the cherry blossoms and that time. So it was like a booming happening time to be in DC. The kids saw up close and personal like giant protests and they had um, Supreme Court cases, um, decisions that were being made, so that we couldn't even go into the court. Plus there was all the protesters outside a lot of the time, so it was, was interesting. I'm to be in DC with them.
Educational.
Yeah, and very educational.
So just like our experience, my experience, I thought it was very fun. They, you definitely learn about, a lot about democracy and why it's so important to engage in democracy. Cuz if we didn't engage, then why have a democracy? But we really learned how to form our own opinions and stand up for our opinions and not just fall into what everyone else is saying. We had a mock trial, which is basically, we went through the legislative process and it was like for four hours one night. It was this huge thing and everyone did it. But we visited with our state representatives, so we met Tina Smith, Amy Cloxchar and Pete Staubert. And we got to talk up in close with them one on one. And there was some other schools from Minnesota there that were also with us, so. And then we made a lot of friends. Um, actually, me and my friend, we got put in a random room and we had two other roommates from North Carolina. So that was interesting.
I called this like the pre-college experience because the first night, all the kids were like, oh my gosh, Ms. Lettska, are you sure we have to be with these people? Um, and then, you know, a couple of days later, then they were all besties and everything was super great, so it was, it was great to make connections and see that.
Um, we saw a bunch of the landmarks, like we went to um, a bunch of the memorials, like the Washington Memorial and we went to the Lincoln Memorial. And like while we were there, we would do workshops at the memorials that like went along with the memorials. So we would learn about different processes that went with um, the memorials in different ways that like we can engage in democracy. And we were busy all the time. It was like nonstop. You go from one thing to the next, to the next, to the next. You never had any downtime and so we learned a lot.
The kids, I think, actually got to go to more than like the teachers did. They were, you know, when they, they had hot topics that they were debating. Um, everything from like the TikTok ban to homelessness and like all the like programs and issues that you deal with. But they take the kids to those places and like talk about like what traditionally our country has done and where politics are at and both sides. It's also very interesting that the kids were kind of shocked to begin with because they tell you to talk about politics. In typically school, it's kind of like we remain neutral and the kids, you know, don't really talk about them. And in DC, they're like, no, we're all gonna learn to have a healthy respect for both sides and every side of every argument and we're gonna hash it all out. So the kids were like, are we supposed to do this? You know, and so it was really good for them to actually be debating and learning both those things with people from all over.
And then we learned why it's important to debate and discuss on certain topics like Ms. Lettska just said. And the other viewpoints, we learned to respect them and not to like bash other people for their opinions. And we learned a lot about Congress and um, how it works and why we need it. And we learned why government as a whole is so important and we learned how it functions a lot. And we also visited the um, the White House. And one of the, um, she was a Virginia graduate. She was interning for Pete Staubert and she showed us around and gave us a personal tour of the White House.
And the Capitol. Yeah, that was Mar Phelps. She was a recent, well, not, not all that long ago in my mind, but I'm an old teacher, a Virginia grad. So she was actually out there as an intern, so she got to take us to a lot of the places and um, talk about a lot of um, the things on Capitol Hill. And actually, there were things going on like that day and she would keep getting pulled away and have to come back and she was very busy as well.
And then we just wanna say thank you to all the um, local businesses and people who donated. But we wanna say a special thank you to Friends and Bank, Evelyn Phelps Lodge, Superior Rockback Company, Aaron's Insurance Agency and Mr. John Starkovich.
So besides the grant that we got, we actually had several um, businesses and people from our community help fund um, the cost of the program for our students, which was pretty amazing.
Oh, awesome.
Very cool.
Super conflicted experience. No, that, that's awesome, yeah. I'm glad you went. Yeah, how many kids was there that went to this?
That's something for us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It was a group of ten this year. We're hoping to kind of kick it off, um, to see if we can keep this going or at least do it every other year. Um, it depends, it's kind of difficult. Like next year, we'll have the Peru trip and stuff going and so it depends on the, the years. But um, it's something that we'd like to offer up and, and hope that kids are interested because you do learn a ton and see a lot. And like these kids, like I said, also got to see a very recent grad out there and what they were doing, which is um, part of her degree. She's going pre-law and things like that, so it was huge to see um, all the avenues that you could take with the civic education.
Yes.
Oh, awesome.
Excellent.
Very cool.
Very cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very good. Okay, superintendent.
Thank you, Director Westby. Couple things to update the board on. Um, we are getting ready for the start of the next school year because it's real, I know it seems like we just ended ours, but the next start is not that far away. We're only looking at two and a half months before we have our halls filled with kids and teachers again. So the, what happens in the summertime is the principals do have some time off. We're meeting again to go over the last things, starting to talk about opening workshop week, what's going to happen. In addition to that, we're updating the handbooks. Principals are working with the teachers to update the handbooks. And one of the things they're gonna be looking for in the handbooks, and this also came up with the, um, there's the discipline committee who's been looking at improving the student behavior in all the buildings. I'll talk about that a little bit. Uh, but they also are involved in this. So, and you heard some individuals say, make the handbooks a little more positive. So it wasn't all, don't do, don't do, thou shalt not. Um, so they're gonna be working on adding some other things wording into the handbook, so the handbooks are a little more positively worded. However, there still will be some thou shalt nots um, in the handbooks. But they're gonna be working on that. A couple of things, just to give you a heads up for next year. Um, Andrea and I will be, and you'll get involved in this at some point. Um, this topic is teachers on call. We have been using that for years. Question has come up, could we save money if we did it differently? If we ran it ourselves? So that's, but there is a cost to going through teachers on call. It's not like in the old days, the teacher would call the principal at five thirty in the morning, six in the morning and then the principal would then get the sub. So teachers on call, we're gonna take a look at it, see if, is it cheaper, more efficient if we do it ourselves? We don't know, but I just wanna give you a heads up that we'll be taking a look at that this year. The, uh, also, we're also gonna take up, even though I know the food service contract is on your agenda coming up with INAC. We've used them for a long time. Uh, this contract coming up is for a year, as it typically is. So we will also be taking a look at, could we run our own food service? Is, can we do it more efficiently? Um, we don't know, it's gonna be tougher because we have certain wages we have to pay that a company, private company like INAC doesn't necessarily have to. But we'll still take a look at that. And um, so just give you a heads up on that one. Uh, last thing, just wanna talk, wanna talk about student behavior for just a little bit. Cuz I, the student behavior, I'm hearing way less of it this year. And I'm hearing overall that the student behavior is better. Teachers generally overall say the behavior was better and a lot of they had, I give credit to them because of systems that they talked about, different ways of doing things. Um, following up on behavior, not waiting so long between an incident and whenever something happens. The high school seems to be the one that still you hear a little bit more about. Let me just say this. Most of our kids are very well behaved. And I even, and I know you hear about this. For example, I went, I took two people through the high school and I walked through the high school myself three times last week of school. So everywhere. And one of the individuals who was a school board chair from a large metro district said to me, said Noel, I wish our kids were this good. I'm not seeing any misbehavior anywhere cuz you can see everything in that high school. Uh, same person said, same person. Uh same person said same thing. I don't see any misbehavior. This, they're all working. Um what did you do? Give them fairy dust or something? Um and the other time when it was just me, I ran into a couple of kids who didn't have a hall pass. That was the worst thing I saw. Most of our kids are very well behaved. They are doing what the teachers are asking for do. I mean, if you listen to some people, you'd think there were dust flying through the air, fifty feet through the air. And I'm not saying that everything's perfect. All high schools have issues because they're large communities. They're really small towns. That's what they are. But I just wanna say, your high school teachers, they're working. Most kids are doing a great job. I walked through Laurentian. I do not see student misbehavior. I walked through Parkview. I do not see student misbehavior. I walked through North Star. I do not see student misbehavior. I do see every once in a while student misbehavior. But come on, if you have a building of three hundred or four hundred people, are we surprised? If one or two kids is struggling and having a temper tantrum or doesn't wanna do something like our I mean, think of our own families and households. How often does somebody in our house doesn't wanna do something? And we're not talking about hundreds of kids. Most kids are really good. They really, really are. And your teachers have worked hard. The behavior is better this year. And I'm really confident that at the high school, it will get, will get it. It'll be better and the kids are gonna respond because we're going to, no matter who is in that high school, we're gonna look at having the kids take care of the building, have the kids take some self-responsibility and do some different things on positioning adults um and how things are are going in the high school building also. So I just wanna say that, and even those who are listening on camera, the high school is going well. I know all kids are not, but most of our kids are really well behaved and they're doing the job we expect them to do. That's the end of my superintendent report.
Well, kudos to the teachers, you know, for um wo- working on that and um and improve what that happened this year. So that's great.
Admittu.
And admittu, yes, of course, yeah.
Any questions or? All right, okay. Treasurer's report.
I'll make a motion that we adopt it. Or no, we don't adopt it. We uh file.
I'll second it. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously. Um let's see. Now administration items. Are we gonna vote on this tonight? Health insurance, correct Andrea? Okay.
I make a motion to accept that.
Oh, she's.
Oh, sorry.
That sounds great. Um this year was a hit a process, so the Health Insurance Transparency and Accountability Act that we had to go through. So we do that every two years. Um our district sent out, we had National Insurance Services help us. We received seven proposals. Um we received from the Minnesota Healthcare Co- um Collective, which we're with right now. Sourcewell, also known as Better Health Collective, PEEP, Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Partners, Gravy, and Crumdale. Um the recommendation is to continue with our current medical plan through the Minnesota Healthcare Health Collective Service Cooperative. They are a ten point nine percent increase. Um that is overall lower than other increases that are the trend. The trend right now is low to mid-teens. So and then they do have a cap of fifteen percent rate for next year. And then our um plans would stay the same for per our contracts. So that is the um recommendation for, to ask for approval.
I make a motion to accept.
Support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One exception.
Okay.
I'll abstain.
Okay, it passes.
Oh wait, I'll just stay here. I have a few more.
You got it. Okay.
You're doing six to two?
Sure. So that is to ask for renewal with our Arrowhead Regional Computing Consortium, also known as ARC. Um they do support the school district in many ways, from financial reporting with the state of Minnesota, with our payroll processing. We did um remove the Mars editing um processing with them. We, um Michelle Keport, our Mars coordinator, does all of that. And we did reach out to them for some support. But that is no longer needed as we have Power School and they do a lot with Infinite Campus. So we did ask for that removal. Um so the rates are there. It did um increase a little, but their services are well received and well used by our district. So.
Any questions for Andrea? Any discussion? I make the motion to approve. Okay.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None.
One exception. I abstain.
Abstain. Abstain. Okay. All right. Consider the approval of the nutrition program, six three?
Uh no, there's more. There's.
What, I miss some?
I think there's more, right?
I haven't taken, not online.
Okay.
But.
Next one is six three, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
The next, um for the food service renewal, we we um are recommending to renew with INAC, who is our current provider. You'll see that there is um a, just an addendum to their management contract for twenty-five, twenty-six year. The increase is three percent.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Any discussion?
So Noel, you had said that we were going to um with the, you know, creating, running our own food.
So obviously, we're not in the position at the moment, but what is the plan for that to like for next year, you're thinking?
So we need, you need INAC for next year.
Yeah.
So we would be looking at the year after that.
The year after.
Yes.
Potentially.
If something were possible.
All right.
I believe that this is the fourth year of this agreement that we can um continue with them right now. You can have up to five. Then we have to go for requests for proposals.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes. Consider the approval and renewal of the teachers' call agreement for twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
So this is a one-year agreement. It is staying the same as um for the percentage that they charge us on top of the wages that we agree to. So this is just for the one year.
So how much does that cost us in one year?
So um an example is our para sub-rate is eighteen ninety-seven. I think I just said that wrong. I think it's eighteen forty-seven. And then we have twenty-nine point eight percent on top of that is what's charged by teachers on call, on top of that rate. So the para receives that gross rate, but we are charged twenty-nine point eight percent.
For their service. So how much is that like a year, would you say? I know that's per.
That's per hour, per.
Oh, I know, but like what would we, so then.
I don't have that number exactly in front of me, but it's, so it's all the substitutes for para substitutes and for teacher substitutes also. So they're also handling all of our teacher substitutes, unless we have to do them in-house per um. A lot of that happens in some instances with hourly rate with the teachers.
What's the rate for the teachers?
So we have a tiered rate. Um of course, I didn't bring that in front of me. Um one thirty, and then I believe after so many days, it's one forty. After so many days, it's one fifty. And it goes by that, but we are charged the twenty-nine point eight percent.
Sure.
For that on top of that.
And we're gonna be looking into doing something different, but until then, this is, this is where we've been at.
Mm-hmm. And when you have a chance, I would like to know like what we do spend on that like yearly. Oh, nice to know.
We can, um I can on a report for the year for the.
We have it in our monthly.
Okay, thank you.
And that will, it includes both the paras and the team substitutes.
Sure. Thank you.
I make a motion to accept.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. Six, five. Consider the approval of Rock Ridge Community Council bylaws. So do we, okay.
Here we go.
There we go. I was wondering if we're gonna have anybody.
Hello. So in addition to this, I'd like to take a little bit of time to update you on some things happening as a community ed. I'll go through the council bylaws first. So the state of Minnesota requires every community ed program in the state to have a set of bylaws. Um prior to this, we've been operating, operating under Virginia's old bylaws. So our community ed council got together. We came up, we developed the bylaws, we reviewed them, we voted on them at our last community ed council meeting. Uh council's required to have four meetings throughout the year as stated in the bylaws. So and every year, we have to do a report stating that we have bylaws. Now, the community ed council is not a committee of the board. It is a council that advises the community ed director as what to do to report to the board and run the programs. So.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Do we want to have any discussion? Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
So a couple of things that are happening, as you know, one of the things that was put in the community ed um area was music lessons. So we're moving forward with that. We've got postings for instructors, postings for a coordinator. Uh music teachers have met with myself and with um representative from the chair, who is also trying to help out with this. We have a plan in place. We are hoping that we'll have everything ready to go by the start of school year. We just need to get instructors, and that's gonna be the hardest thing, is finding instructors. But um we're starting to get some applications in on that. So we're working on scheduling and how that's gonna work and how the fees are gonna be collected. Um that's in the mix.
Will that, will that be in that, in your um community ed brochure that you put out?
Uh lessons might be in there. It depends on if we've got everything in place by the time that has to go to print. And that'll go to print probably at the end of July.
Okay.
So we'll have something in there about them, but I don't know if we'll have all the exact details um about it.
Okay.
So but yeah, there'll be information in there with that. Uh speaking of the community ed catalog, that's ninety percent done, waiting on some advertisers, some final classes and stuff. So that'll be ready for print and hopefully, well, that'll be out before the end of, or before the start of school is the plan for that. Uh school age childcare, quick update on that. Uh summer camps, got a hundred kids registered for it already. Um they were willing to take up to a hundred and twenty. Um but due to some of the layoffs and stuff, they're not sure they're gonna get that, cause some of the families that had signed up have decided not to do it at this point. So we're not sure if we'll get to that, that level of a hundred and twenty or not. Uh before and after school care this year, we've had over a hundred and sixty-three kids enrolled. Um for and after school care this year, the program's strong. It's been growing. Biggest group of kids have been at Parkview, followed by Laurentian and then North Star. A lot of that has to do with the age of the kids. But that program is going well. Um So this registration and stuff will all be set. That'll be in the catalog. That'll be opened up in August for people to start registering for. After school childcare, we're hoping to get more kids in the morning at Laurentian next year. I know we had a little bumpy start to the start of the year with Laurentian and AM stuff, but we've got that figured out and Amanda's got a good feel on that right now. Uh we're in the plans of the second Holiday Bazaar, getting vendors for that. We're about sixteen vendors for that right now. We want to get to twenty-five. Uh I believe the date for that's gonna be November twenty-second. At the North Star again, uh we're hoping to add some pieces to that. Possibly something in the music area with the choir or the band playing some holiday type music um during that event. So we're working on moving that forward as well. And then it's all the other sports classes and activities that we're trying to get.
Mm-hmm.
Questions?
Well.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Six, six. Consider the approval purchase office, offer for the school property in Virginia. The old Mill Forty.
How, how big is it? Oh, oh, sorry.
Good evening, board members. Um I'm Gigi Graik with the Virginia Housing Authority. And I'm here to um present the purchase offer that um is in front of you. Um so what we're looking at is um six hundred Fourth Street South, Virginia. It is a vacant lot and um our offer for this lot is twenty-three, seven hundred. And the brief um description of the offer is, um we have to do a phase one assessment, which will be paid by the Virginia HRA. And depending on the results of the phase one, we may have to do phase two. So um we are asking to split the cost of phase two. And that will be only necessary if it's um phase one comes back as phase two is necessary. So um we're also looking at, will mutually decide the closing date and sorry, and the legal costs will be split e- by each party. And um if approved by the board, our um legal counsel would draft the purchase agreement. For your review. So we see this as an opportunity, as the lot is currently unused and will be hopefully used for a single family homes, which would increase the tax base for the city of Virginia. Also would benefit the school district and our community.
So where is that at?
The Mill Forty is beyond Fifth Street South, between Fifth Street and Fourth Street in the seven hundred block.
It's by your house. It's where the old, um you know, skating rink was.
Oh, it's a skating rink area right there. It's just, it used to be.
So it goes the Masaba Daily news, that church, and then the Mill Forty across Fifth Street.
Which would be an amazing place for a single family. I mean, how, you know, close to the school, within walking distance.
Have we had that property appraised?
Um that is, we haven't had that appraised, but that that is market value and that is what our, um what do you call it? You know, it's what is assessed at.
The twenty-three thousand?
Yeah.
I don't know. That seems low to me.
No. We, we sold a, we sold a property last year.
Yeah, it's definitely.
We sold a property last year for over market and it was only six grand.
Mm-hmm.
So this definitely is, is a.
And do, how much, how much uh land is it acre wise? It's just a little.
Yeah, it's.
It's just a little.
It's not very big.
Yeah. And it's been empty for quite a while.
Right. And hopefully, what I'm thinking is it'll behoove us because we'll get some money. Plus hopefully, you know, single families with kids will come in and which will help us as well.
Mm-hmm. How about us now having to pay for any legal fees?
So the purchase agreement will be drafted by our attorney. However, I'm assuming your legal counsel will have to review the purchase offer, purchase as well.
Mm-hmm.
The only thing I'm wondering about is like phase two, do you know how much that would cost offhand?
I'm wondering too.
It's estimated around twelve-five.
So I feel like we should.
Twelve thousand five hundred?
That's.
That's phase two, right?
That's phase two, and that will be only conducted if phase one comes back as.
That's contaminated.
If phase one comes back as needed, we'll split the phase two.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna have to split it. I don't think, I think it's.
We'll never, we'll never sell it if we don't get a clear environmental assessment. That's my thought.
Honestly, that is true. You can't build on it unless.
Yeah.
We'd have to do some sort of abatement.
But could, but couldn't we adjust the contract and say that we.
That's a change.
We could do that. So I mean, we could just say, let's go forward in phase one, but then renegotiate at phase two. Not agree to the phase two out, you know, outright, I guess.
I, I would like to. I don't think we should pay for that. If, if it comes to phase two, I think the purchaser should um uh take care of that money, pay for that.
Okay, we are, we are talking about the HRA. So they are, you know, nonprofit or whatever, and they're getting, they're trying to get grants. So it's not like we're just, we're selling to, you know, a, a, you know, for-profit agency.
Um I'll, first, so we can discuss this, I'll make a motion that we accept the contract as presented.
I'll support.
We're gonna say something, Noel, about it?
Um I was gonna say that, this is just me talking here, you're the ones who voted. I think this is a great offer. You've had this property sitting bacon for decades. It hasn't been used. I think this is a great offer, you've had this property sitting vacant for decades, it hasn't been used. You could get stuck with all of phase two, if someone else comes through and wants to buy it. 'Cause normally, the cities, if they're developing something, they take care of this, so it's clear, so someone can, this is kinda normal to me. I'm actually surprised they're offering to pay for half of it, 'cause we don't know what's under there, there might be nothing under there. I'm gonna guess there's nothing under there, 'cause it's just, far as I know, it's just been a skating rink and, well. I, I, I think it's gonna be okay. So I think you're getting a good, a deal here. As far as the price for the land, that is what the city of Evans paid for, paid you, was the taxable market value, so this is very consistent with that.
And really, like I said, I do think it will behoove us in the future, if we can get, it's gonna help the city with uh, taxes, and it's gonna help us if we can get, you know, make sure that there's kids in those houses.
And, and what, what type, type of homes would be built?
They're, they're looking at single-family homes, is that correct, Gigi?
Like, um, what's, um, Nathan Thompson's ahead of?
That Habitat, they're not Habitat homes.
They're not Habitat.
No, they're not. Do you wanna explain that a little bit more, or?
Um, we are hoping to put an application this summer to a MHA for um, a grant. Um, we are hoping to build at least four single-family homes at this lot.
So, so, just so I'm clear, ha- ha, if we, if we get to the second stage, that's gonna take away half of the twenty-three, seven, right?
No, it's gonna be six thousand dollars, six thousand, six thousand.
That's, that's the maximum.
I thought it was twelve.
As a, as a kid, I don't know, but the.
It depends on.
We just have an estimate.
It depends on, on the severity of one.
Exactly.
And that's only necessary.
Sure.
Right, but even if one kid comes out of those four homes and walks into North Star, you're coming out ahead.
Bingo.
That's ten thousand dollars right there.
What was the square footage for the houses that you're, the footprint?
We are hoping to um, make so two and three bedrooms.
Perfect. So that will definitely appeal to families, hopefully.
Yep. Okay.
Okay. Are the motions on the table, any more discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Pass, no, okay. Okay, it passed. Alright.
Bro, good, thank you, Gigi.
Thank you. Consider the approval of uh, child and adult care food program, invented meals for twenty-four, twenty-five. We have any? Who are you talking on this, any more information?
What this is, members of the board, is you have Head Start and Parkview. And for, and AEOA runs Head Start. And for years, we've kinda had this, they have to come into the building and bring in food, we've done this every year, it hasn't been an issue, but you need to approve it, 'cause you're the legal entity for the school district. And this allows Head Start, AEOA, for them to do all of their meals and get that taken care of.
I make a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Or I should say, any discussion, sorry. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Consider the approval of the MSBA Membership Dues and Renewals Board Book Policy Services for Subscription of the fiscal year of twenty-six.
So, uh, so moved.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One abstention.
Abstention. Abstention one. Um, consider the approval of the twenty-five to twenty-six Resolution Membership, Membership in the Minnesota State High School League. Um.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes unanimously. This one is a roll call vote, consider the approval of the resolution requiring the tally write-in votes, and the greater than a ballot, let me reread this. Consider the approval of the resolution requiring the tally of write-in votes only if write-in votes are greater than the ballot of the candidate votes. And we need a roll call vote for that.
I'll make a motion to, for this resolution.
Okay, support.
Okay.
Now we'll have the roll call, right? Tim?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Um, Nicole?
Yes.
Lisa, yes? Jody?
Yes.
And Jen?
Yes.
Okay. Policies, the second reading for the policies.
I make a motion to accept one through twelve of the second reading of those policies.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Any discussion? No discussion, um. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. Where are we here?
Number eight. Policies.
Policies regarding electron, no. I think yes.
Yeah, they're separate.
Oh, they're separate, okay. Policies eight, uh, regarding electronic devices and cell phones, second reading.
I'll make a motion.
Support.
Any discussion?
What is our policy on a cellphone, right now? With, with seventh through twelfth grade, or even in the elementary?
You have said that they shouldn't be out.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the only exception would be if a teacher gives permission for a class to be using them for some reason. With the exception of certain times in the high school, like passing time, some bunch study hall, et cetera.
So they can be in the building as of right now, some schools are not even allowing them in the building. So they can be in the building as of right now.
'Cause, and slowly but slowly, you can see it, schools and they are getting, well, everybody's kind of addicted to their phones right now, I shouldn't say everybody, but a lot of people, and so, but schools are slowly, slowly realizing they have to restrict them more and more and more. Because unfortunately, great decisions aren't always made on TikTok by our kids.
Correct.
Because they should be focusing on what the teacher is instructing.
So how's that going right now with the restriction, how it is?
It went better, since you put more restrictions on it, it's gone better. I believe if you took an informal poll of the teachers, they would like to get rid of them altogether.
And that even has helped in the behaviors that you were talking about earlier.
Okay, any parents, however, like having the idea of their kid having a phone available.
Yeah, and, no, I won't say anything. 'Cause what, what the parents, why the parents want it is not a valid reason. But you're right, well, I get, I read the MSBA bulletins, and more and more schools are shutting them up.
And they're finding higher levels of achievement by the kids.
Yeah, that's another thing too.
I think the cell phones are.
Especially in the elementary.
Yeah.
We, uh, Jody and I listened to a principal down at MSBA talking about what she did at her school, and she saw the great, I mean, they, they took and they held the phones and they didn't, you know, they were very strict with it, and the grades went up. So, I mean, that's very telling.
So what do we do at the elementary level, do they, are they allowed in the classrooms, do they have to stay, they have to stay in the locker, correct? Okay, there's some teachers in the audience who say yes.
You too.
Which I like, I'm glad about that, so.
And the only time that you will see a cellphone in the classroom is there are some diabetic students that, that utilize our cell phone for their numbers.
Sure.
And they have to be within a certain.
Yeah, for medical reasons, got it.
Another thing this principal said was they had like little bags that had a, had a lock on it, that only the teacher could unlock. So it's there, but they didn't have access.
Expensive.
She said twenty bucks a pop.
Yeah, but, yeah, it would cost us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have the information.
She said she was, first she tried parents, you know, throwing twenty bucks at it, and that didn't fly, so.
Yeah.
So that is, so the high school, though, they can have it on their person, but it's up to every individual teacher what they will require for their classroom?
No, they can't.
They can't?
Unless it's.
Carry it on them?
An exception for a certain project.
So they're, they can't carry it into the?
They don't wanna, they can't pull it out.
Because they can have it on them.
In their backpack.
Okay, got it.
When, when are we gonna be able to revisit this, because that, that's just too tempting, you know?
I would say when the student handbooks come from the high school, let them work on it for a little bit, and let's see what they present you, and then you can react to what they're suggesting would like to do at the high school level.
Now, the state came out with something in March, and I forget the, all the details on that now.
They, they left it up to the school, each individual school district, no. Well, that's this month.
Mm-hmm. Things are always gonna change. Alright, um.
I make a motion to.
No, we already.
We already have one.
I have it, okay, perfect.
For all three?
Yeah, for all three.
All three, okay. Okay. Motion is on the table, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
None.
Passes unanimously. Meeting announcements, the next regular meeting will be Monday, June twenty-third at six PM at Rock Ridge. Uh, and it'll be interesting to see how we get here, as we come the other way.
Oh.
At least I do, from the. Um, and make a motion to adjourn. Support. Thank you very much.
Thank you.